Welcome, everyone. Thank you for making it out tonight. We're going to call to order the January 14, 2019 Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order. We're going to begin with an invocation given by Commissioner Macy, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you can.
As this body convenes for the first time in the new year, we join individuals and groups the world over in making a fresh start. We resolved to listen with deeper understanding. We resolved to think critically and creatively about turning problems into opportunities. We resolved to seek solutions that are smart, unifying, and fun. We resolved to honor the past and prepare for the future. We resolved to use our talents, training, and love for the city to give Royal Oak the best possible year in 2019.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us to item number four on the agenda tonight, which is public comment. A few rules before we begin. The City Commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to make decisions. Now is the time set aside for the public to address the City Commission on any city-related issues, whether or not they're on the agenda or not. I ask that comments be directed to the Commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. In addition to public comment, there will be a public hearing for the assessment of tonight's meeting. If you're here to comment on that special assessment paving from a soy, you may wait until the public hearing is open and comment at that time, and the same rules apply. If you wish to speak tonight at either public comment or at the public hearings, please wait until recognized by me, the mayor. Come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Please be mindful that the City Commission wishes to hear from anyone who wants to speak tonight, so there is a timer at the podium for three minutes, and it helps you keep track of your time. If you don't wish to speak tonight, no problem. You can reach out to us anytime. We have paper letters here. We get emails, as well as an occasional telephone call. Please note that the City Commission won't respond directly to questions during public comment. However, we are taking notes and will address your questions when the agenda item is discussed or refer to the proper city department if it's not on the agenda this evening. So with that, who's first? Mr. Harrison?
I'll go first. Bill Harrison, 2729 Trafford, Royal Oak. Got kind of a potpourri of items tonight, just short ones. When are we going to stop giving the downtown to John Witz? This carnival thing is a joke. It uses strategic surface parking for retail. You know, if you listen to the DDA meeting and listen to Lori London talk about the detriment that it has on retail with loss of parking at critical times. And Witz is charging an entrance fee to this carnival. While it was advertised all over TV, there was an event that he was hosting downtown Detroit, and they were bringing free entrance, no entrance fee. And I'm just getting a little tired of this guy using us. We should be charging him some kind of a property tax like you do with everybody else. I have a question as to why the Commission and the DDA no longer receive monthly police reports. When Laura was on the Commission, they not only got monthly police reports, but whenever there was some kind of adverse activity going on, they got telephone calls advising them what's going on. When I talk to some of you folks, I find out, you know what's going on. I have a question now that the -- we're going to have a medical center here instead of an office building. I realize that there's redesign necessary because an office building and a medical center are totally different. I've been in the architect and engineering business, as you know, for over 55 years. Just wondering, when is the construction going to resume again? And does -- pardon me, it has?
Yes.
Okay, well, pardon me, I just haven't noticed. Because of the change of use, is there any additional cost to the city in terms of infrastructure or anything? Okay, well, that's good to hear. The location of the city hall, at one time it was going to be on the south border. Now I see that the site plan shows the new city hall moved north so that there's a dedicated parking lot on the south. Am I wrong? And the reason I ask is, you know, when it was -- when the city hall was on the southern border of what is now a parking lot, there was shared parking between the city hall and the farmer's market. And the city hall and the farmer's market aren't open at the same time. But now, when you've got parking on the other side of the city hall, there's going to be people that don't even know it's there. Doesn't look like good planning. I was a kid, and this is back in the '40s, we used to refer to what is now downtown Royal Oak as uptown, and Detroit was downtown. When I was on the DDA, I tried to promote the idea of referring to downtown Royal Oak, what is now as uptown, to differentiate between our area and Detroit. Of course, it didn't mean a lot--
Mr. Harrison, I do need you to finish your last point, sir.
Okay, I'll wrap.
Thank you. Sorry.
It didn't mean as much, you know, back then as it does now, when we really need to differentiate. So I guess my question is, where is this PR consultant that you folks have hired? I mean, maybe you want to pass that on to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Ashley?
Alan Ashley, Royal Oak Manor. I'm going to speak about two black holes the city has. Earlier this month already, one of our residents at Royal Oak Manor, who parks in P7. Now, if you don't know where P7 is, it's right directly across from Royal Oak Manor. She parked her car there. Next morning, she goes out, the car was broken into, and the ignition was torn out of her car in the middle of the night. This parking lot has no lights, no fence, nothing. The only time it's patrolled is by when the meanby comes through around 11:30, 12 o'clock to check for people extending their three hours, and again later in 2 o'clock. I have come back from Tiger games late at night and found them playing beer can bowling in the middle of the parking lot, and nobody does anything. And then when you look at them, you're harassed and cursed and all that. I have seniors parking over there. Now I have seniors that don't even want to park over there because afraid their cars are going to be broken into. And that a week ago, I had a stack of pyramid of beer cans on the back end of my '95 Honda. So this is not -- to fix this is very simple. The city put a 6 to 8 10-foot-high fence around P3, P7, and P8. This fence will cost the city nothing. Now, you're saying, how is this possible? Very easily. Those properties are going to be bought by developers. All you do is put the charge of the fence and to do the cost of the property, the fences are walk-through, are free for you, and also have better patrols. The other black hole I'm going to pass out to you here, what you're looking at, give me a minute to grab it. What you're looking at is from this construction site outside this building, looking down Williams. What you see is the 4th Street, those are lights. Beyond those lights is black. And in the summer, it's even worse because of the trees cover the streetlights. There are no low streetlights. Behind that, where you see at 4th Street, that's the Salvation Army. Behind that is a parking lot. Behind that is a church school, kindergarten through eighth. When I walked here, the Lutheran Church went across from that school. It's pitch black, and their parking lot is full with people going to some church function. There's a Jewish community center at the end of 7th Street being built. You have a brand six-story condo, 70 that's going to be -- was proposed last year to be built at 6th and Williams. And you have already condos, four-story condos there, plus the Royal Oak Fire Department is in this dark zone.
Mr. Ashley, I do need you to finish up your--
Right. What I'm saying is, the city is every time a developer or somebody comes around here and want to develop something, you do favors. But for the city residents who live in this area, the lights are so old, they don't function. Please put in the same lights you do for businesses. Treat the residents like you treat the guests coming into the city and the businesses. Be fair to us. Stop giving us the back of the hand while you pat the businesses and residents coming into the city. Shake hands, and long as they bring money in, your people are happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ashley. All right. Who's next? Ms. Wagner?
I hadn't planned on speaking tonight, so I didn't bring a prepared thing, but--
Can you move the mic a little closer? I'm having a hard time hearing you. Thank you.
No. I attended -- I noticed the strategic planning is on the meeting tonight, and I attended all three meetings. And at every single meeting, I talked about how the seniors should have some sort of special consideration. I think back in 2012, there was a senior liaison on the strategic planning agenda. It was a goal, and nothing ever happened. There was never any response, from what I can find, from any minutes anywhere. Correct? Anywhere. Correct me if I'm wrong. I see nothing in your strategic planning goals at all having to do with seniors. As you know, we're going to soon be 30% of the population. And at the very minimum, I think we should bring back the committee that we used to have that was dedicated to seniors instead of it being rolled into Parks and Rec. I know we have the task force that's working on a plan that's sanctioned by ARP, but that's a five-year plan, and there is so much, so much that could be done in the meantime to make living in Royal Oak better for seniors. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Anybody else here to speak tonight? Yes, sir.
My name is Harris. I live at 621 Florence Avenue. I moved in at the end of April with my girlfriend Rachel. We just bought our first house. We're really excited. And first day we got there, we found out that our driveway was basically unusable. When we were shopping for the house, my car, unfortunately, was at the dealership being repaired, and so we only had Rachel's SUV. And when we got there, we figured out that my car is difficult to -- impossible sometimes to make it up the driveway. So after investigating a little bit, I reached out to the engineering department to find out what the code was for driveway approaches. And I was informed that the approach was a 10% maximum slope. So I went outside and I measured it myself, and we're at about a 30% slope, which is about triple what code says. So I actually called the engineering department, and I spoke to two engineers there. And they informed me that in 2014 or 2015, they had ripped out all the driveway approaches on our block, as well as multiple flags of sidewalk, and had replaced them all after doing a water main repair. And when they replaced ours, we ended up with this 30% grade. When I questioned them further, they weren't able to provide any permits or any documentation of the work that they performed, or any approvals stating any deviations, or any other decisions they had made regarding that construction. And then, after pushing them a little bit more, I was told essentially, in somewhat rude terms, that it was my problem to figure out and that there was no responsibility on the city's part. So I took a step back for a couple months before reaching out to the engineering department again. They came over to our house to inspect it. I spoke to Matt Exley, and he informed me that to repair the problem would be about a $6,000 cost, $3,500 for our side of the driveway, sidewalk, and driveway approach, as well as $2,500 for our neighbor Jessica Towers' driveway to be repaired that we would have to shoulder. Obviously, since this is out of code, I felt that it was unfair that we have to deal with it when it was work performed by the city that was very obviously out of code and makes our property difficult to enjoy and use in terms of getting to our garage, being able to use our driveway to our full extent. And so I wanted to bring it in front of you guys to discuss, and discuss with the engineering department how we can rectify that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Anybody else here to speak tonight? One once, one twice. All right. We're going to bring the meeting back up here to the side of the table, which brings us to item number five, which is approval of the agenda.
I'll move.
Okay, the motion by Commissioner Lavassar. We have a support by -- or a second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. That brings us to item number six, the consent agenda. Are there any items that anyone wants to remove from the consent agenda to discuss? Does anyone want to make a motion on the consent agenda? Mr. Gibbs?
No, I'm sorry. Nothing.
Mr. Perush?
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Perush. We have a second by Commissioner Douglas. Okay, discussion? Okay. The consent agenda now consists of the City Commission meeting minutes from December 17th and 19th. Appointments Committee rotation, mayor appointments, claims, December 21st, 18, January 2nd, 4th, and 15th. Approval of purchase orders, Department of Public Services request to fill vacancies, authorization to file suit regarding housing rehabilitation mortgages, and release of guarantee, Douglas M. Edkin. Any further discussion? All right. With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. This brings us to item number seven, which is receive and file non-action items, which consists of the December 2018 investment report and the December 2018 Franco Project Activity Report. Motion or discussion? Commissioner Douglas?
I move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, support by Commissioner Dubbuck. Discussion? All right. With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. That brings us to item number eight, which is the public hearing of assessment, special assessment paving of a soy road. Mr. Callahan?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This evening, we have scheduled the public hearing of assess -- sorry, public hearing of assessment for the special assessment paving of a soy road. There's no action to be taken tonight, other than to open the public hearing and take comments and recommendations from the public regarding the costs, the assessed -- estimated assessed costs for the project. I would add that the final assessment and payment schedule and interest rates are established with standard resolution five, which takes place after the project is done.
First, Mr. Callahan, at this point. No questions? I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone to speak here at this public hearing? Okay. I'll close the public hearing. Meeting back up to the side of the table. And I think--
There's no action.
Yeah, there's no action. You don't need any action from us, right?
I do not.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Don't go anywhere, because item number nine is a sidewalk improvement program. Mr. Callahan?
Yes. A little bit of background. The sidewalk program we most recently finished in 2017 with the new sidewalks that were deemed necessary and done in 2018 is now done. Since that time, and over the course of the last few years, but most recently, we've had a lot of discussions in-house, the city manager, myself, and also with my staff who run these projects regarding our sidewalk program, the fact that is relatively poorly received, that we have the opportunity now, before we start another program, where we could take some time and look at our criteria, what other communities do, get more in-depth with different repair methods that other communities might employ. And we have some information about a new state law that has been passed, which limits the liability of communities with regards to sidewalks in general being open and obvious or disrepair, that kind of protect us a little bit more. So with the legal environment changing, with this opportunity between programs to take a chance, to take a step back and try and make this a more acceptable, palatable program to our residents, we have a resolution before you that would give staff some direction to go and do some exploration with regards to our criteria and other communities and some of these different types of repairs that other people use, and come back to you this spring with some recommendations for a 2020 program. Unless, of course, you wanted to move forward, we are prepared to move forward with the sidewalk program. We needed to get that out to bid soon, so we'd like that direction as soon as possible. Most of you might not have been around here in 2012, but the Commission did give us direction at that time to start a sidewalk program, and we're just looking for that same type of affirmation at this time, whether or not you want us to go forward. So I'm here to answer questions, if anybody has any.
Ms. Shalavasser?
In your letter to us, you talk about slicing and jacking. If you could, just for the audience, give a brief description of what slicing and jacking is. And also, you indicated that perhaps we could permit homeowners to utilize those solutions, but you weren't recommending that the city use those solutions. If you could elaborate on the reasons for that, that could--
Certainly. Slicing, there are special concrete saws that are available that can actually -- has a horizontal blade or a blade that can be more parallel to the ground than, say, vertical, where you're sawing through a piece of concrete to, say, remove it. These types of saws can be used to shave off a section of concrete that is lifted or the high side of a differential. That was what we're referring to when we call slicing. The communities that I looked at didn't really have any criteria for how much of the sidewalk slab they'd allow to be sliced off, or what they do, or how many times they would allow that to be take place on the same piece of sidewalk. So those are types of things we'd want to look at if we were to use slicing as a repair method. The other method called jacking is where foam or some sort of liquid mortar, or they call it mud, because that's what's used when you put bricks down, the liquid mortar is injected underneath the sidewalk slab in order to lift it up. There's no criteria that I could find by any other community that how and where they would use that. But I can see it being used where sidewalks are low, that aren't being affected by trees, or in low areas where water's ponding, a homeowner complains about water ponding on their sidewalk, and they could raise the sidewalk up. And the reason why we wouldn't necessarily do that as the city is because we don't know exactly where all the locations are that we would want to use these things, and we would want it to be on the homeowner. I mean, we're looking at charging homeowners for the work that we do, and I don't see this as being like the overwhelming type of repair that we would do. So it would be very difficult to find a contractor to come in and do this type of work on such a small scale at a reasonable price for the city. So if a homeowner wanted to try that and thought they could save money over the cost of us replacing that sidewalk, we would allow them to do that if we decided to go down the path. Does that make sense?
Well, I think I understand now. I guess I'd want to have a little bit more information on why contractors wouldn't want to do it if we were to hire them as opposed to the city, as opposed to the residents.
I think it would be possible to find contractors who would do that, but it wouldn't be the same contractors who would be doing a replacement program. So it wouldn't be as simple just hiring someone like Italia and expecting them to take whatever action for a particular slab is most appropriate. If you wanted to have somebody slice, you could bring a contractor in and have them do slices, or it can also be ground off, but slicing has now become the -- more of the standard than grinding. And the other part of it, up four years ago, five years ago, we did allow residents to patch holes in the sidewalk. This, you remember, happened when we were in the Vincetta neighborhood, and Matt Garrawalls was the gentleman really behind it. We went into that very skeptically, but in reviewing it, it seems to be working just fine.
It's a quick creep. We had a standard. We found out what worked best, and we said, try it. If you do it right, it can work.
I would add, we had not that many people go through the process to patch the pits, you know, less than 100 out of thousands of properties. So it's not something that we could, like, effectively oversee. I mean, we allowed homeowners to do it. They let us know that they were going to do it, and we told them how they could do it, and we're seeing good results.
But typically, I mean, I would argue that the people that had the most concern about the pitting had long stretches of sidewalk where pitting was, you know, an issue. If it was, you're going to pay $70 to, you know, fix one flag, or pay $100 to replace the thing, and the city will do, and you don't have to worry about it. You know, I think a lot of people opted, well, just replace it because it's not worth my time to try to do this myself and see if it works. But it's good news. I mean, and I think that, you know, breeds a very healthy conversation about whether or not some of these other things like jacking and, I don't know about slicing, but grinding, you know, maybe these are things that, you know, could have an equal. I mean, certainly, they don't preserve the lifetime of the concrete, but, you know, if it lasts five years, three years, six years, you know, maybe it's worth it at the homeowner's expense. I think I had Commissioner Macy, Commissioner Douglas, and Commissioner Dubbuck, and Commissioner Perush.
As you know, Mr. Callahan, I'm extremely enthusiastic about the idea of looking at this program again and possibly loosening the standards based on what you see in other communities and what you think would work best for our community. I really appreciate that your team has been taking time to look at this and be really thoughtful about, before starting this program again, is this the program that will be serving our community best? So thank you so much for that. The only question I really have for you is, do you see a danger in our delaying for one year repairing of the sidewalk that hasn't been repaired in, whatever, six years?
Right now, we take immediate action if there's any sort of dangerous situation. So we notify homeowners right away that there's a problem and that the ordinance says I can ask them to fix the sidewalks. We always run a concrete replacement program where we can fix the sidewalk if the homeowner doesn't, and we generate costs so that we know how much to charge them, and we bring that to the Commission. And you see that every spring. So I don't know that there's too many dangerous situations out there right now, or unsafe locations, and if we do have those, we're going to take care of them immediately. So I don't see there's a good reason that we couldn't potentially do this and come back in the spring of 2020.
What a great answer.
Yes, I'm looking at your -- I mean, you did a spot check of a neighborhood that was last repaired in 2012, and we're looking at sidewalks with a half-inch or more differential at 44%, and cracked or broken sidewalks at 31%. That seem -- is that -- I mean, that seems shocking to me, but is that pretty typical over six years, that you find that degree of change, of deterioration?
I don't want to say that I can compare to even the sidewalk program we did in the '90s through the early 2000s, because we didn't collect this type of data for that. But I -- this doesn't shock me. This seems fairly normal, that the vast majority of our sidewalk repairs were due to the differentials. And cracked and broken sidewalks, surprisingly, we have people and vehicles that are driving across the sidewalks all the time. That's typically how you get something to break. Something falls on it, some -- but mostly, somebody drives across it. And that's the second highest criteria, you know, the percentage of the sidewalks that we looked at. I would add that the 20% other surface conditions, in the first three years of the sidewalk program, we didn't look too heavily onto the pitting. So there probably be a lot more areas that have been pitted in this area of this 21% that's on here. And, you know, those homeowners, if that's the only defect in their sidewalk, will be given the opportunity to patch those as part of the program if, when we move forward. We're not going to not allow people to do that. So we'll still do that.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Commissioner Dubbuck?
Yes, I just want to agree with Commissioner Macy that it's great that we're going to, you know, the suggestion to take time and look at this and make sure that it's as effective and efficient as possible. And I think at the end of the program is absolutely the right time to do it, now that we've been through six years. And I think we were pretty aggressive, as we've heard about, so there should be a pretty safe gap for us. To clarify, Commissioner Douglas's question, it's not that 37% of all the sidewalks were cracked. It's that's the ratio of those that need to be replaced. 37% were due to cracking.
That's correct.
Right. Okay. It kind of sounded like you were saying that 77% of slabs were coming out. What's the overall percentage of slabs looked at that have failed since the last visit? Do we have that number?
No, we did not look at that.
Okay. We could easily calculate that, though, right?
Right. You know, I'm going to say that some of these probably are adjacent to or on slabs that were-- were replaced before.
Oh, yeah, no, but I mean, the entire network, so, I mean, of all the, of everything you assess in a given year, what, 15% have to go? Do we have that number?
I don't.
Okay.
I would have to compare this to all the sidewalks that are in that area.
I'd just be curious, because we know how many were replaced in the first round, the first time we did it. I'd be curious to see if the number that you have to replace now, like, how much that percentage drops, because we've already been through it once, and I think that makes the case that doing it on a regular basis keeps the ongoing costs low, as opposed to the large gap we have between the beginning of the program six years ago and where we are now.
Right. I'll actually try to get that information and work it into the report that we'll turn back in, you know. Of the many hundreds of thousands of square feet, you know, this is the percentage that we're seeing now that needs to be replaced.
Yeah, and I think there's an important figure there for us to weigh in assessing the value of the program overall. And then with regard to, you know, considering other methods, I know you've given us a report before that expressed concern that they might not last as long, and that the number that fail, you end up replacing at a higher cost. So if you're going to do that in your report, that'd be great. I think there probably is, if we're doing it at scale, like the shaving, there's, I would assume some cost savings there if we are allowing it to happen across the city. And with regard to us doing it versus homeowners, could we, I mean, you've got the codes for how you're replacing things, could you just create a code for shave or jack eligible? And at least then, we could add the data to see if it's something a contractor would do for us at a reduced rate, as opposed to homeowners paying the freight of, you know, the full cost.
We can take a look at that, too. We will be going back to walk all of the areas again to collect some more data like that. What would we consider if we were going to go down these paths of alternate methods of repair, which flags would be eligible for that type of thing?
The other thing I'd like to see is, you know, if it's a repeat offender. So if we go out there and we take a look and we do our sampling, is this one that we replaced the last time around, and is it because of a tree, you know, like, hey, roots happen? Or is it because, you know, maybe there's a workmanship issue, whatever it may be? It'd be helpful to know. Is it the same flat, what percentage of the same flags get, you know, removed over and over again per cycle? Commissioner Dubach, sorry, I took your time.
You're right.
But I gave you your time, too.
Is there a motion?
Well, I think there, we still have, Commissioner Purush, do you have something to add as well?
Just very quickly, I think the game changer for me is the change in the state law, because I know that the impetus to this program for the past couple of years has been the huge liability potential, you know, huge settlements for accidents on sidewalks to justify the program. Not only is it safer for people, you don't want to trip and fall and break your arm, but on the other hand, if you're looking at a $200,000, $300,000 settlement because someone had serious injuries because they fell on the sidewalk, that, to me, is a game changer. So the fact that the state actually took a look at this and amended the liability statute so that our exposure is not eliminated, but it's significantly reduced from what it was before, is huge, which makes, I think, this opportunity to give us some breathing room and to reevaluate the program as a whole makes a whole lot of sense. So I really, too, appreciate the work that you've put into it so far, and I'm looking forward to getting it even more fine-tuned before we start it up again, whether it would be in 2020 or 2021, whenever we decide we're ready to do it. But I really appreciate the fact that the state has given us some breathing room so that we can take a step back and just kind of reevaluate the best way to do this.
Commissioner Vasar.
Just to follow up on a question that was stated earlier, it looks like, if I'm understanding this correctly, in 2012, for this particular section of town, there was a little over 282,000 square feet of sidewalk replaced, and the flags that were identified this time around would equate to 218,000 square feet. So that looks like it's about 77% of what it was seven years ago, you know, doing my math. And then if I understand correctly, the percentages as far as what's, you know, differential, 44% of those 218,000 square feet have an issue with there being a half-inch differential between slabs, and then so on down, 31% are cracked or broken, 21% have spalling or popping, and then 4% have other issues. So with that all said, I'm going to move that we adopt the first proposed resolution that the commission hereby directs administration to review current sidewalk program criteria and procedures, prepare a report as to how other communities operate sidewalk programs, develop options and recommendations for an improved sidewalk improvement program, which would start in 2020, and the reports be submitted by Commissioner Nolaier than May 20th of 2019.
Motion by Commissioner Vasar. We have a second by Commissioner Macy. All right, discussion. Commissioner Purush.
The only thing that I forgot to add was, when we were talking about the half-inch differential, and oh, my gosh, that's such a huge number, at least it appears, our driveway is a concrete driveway, very impermeable, but it, there are squares in it. It's a two-car width driveway. And our one-section square dropped at least an inch from this point last spring. Who knows why? But, you know, whatever natural conditions caused that to occur happened in a relatively small amount of time. So it happens. It doesn't have to have anything physical going over it. It just, whatever water conditions underneath it caused it to drop almost an inch, it did. So it's not surprising that you have such a high number of sidewalks, because a half-an-inch, when you come down to it, is a really, really small amount. I mean, that's a tiny, tiny, tiny measurement. So to have that much of a differential, that's, to me, that's not surprising at all.
Any other discussion points? All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion passed. Thank you, Mr. Callahan.
You're welcome.
This brings us to item number 10, the adoption of goals and objectives for the fiscal year 2019 to 2020. Give me Mr. Crzan.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commission. Annually, the City Commission identifies goals and objectives for the coming fiscal year. This helps identify priorities for funding as the city develops its annual budget. This year, the process began with an evening meeting in November, followed by a full-day meeting in December. During these meetings, the group identified issues facing the city and began work drafting an action plan. During the final meeting in December, the group identified priorities among this action plan. Between that time and now, staff has given some feedback on the draft action plan, which has been incorporated into the document before you tonight. This action plan retains a continued focus on improving communication, the development in Normandy Oaks, attracting recruiting, and retaining city employees. Some additions this year and changes include focusing on the next phases of the Civic Center project, looking at some reorganization of administrative tasks across the city. So tonight, we're looking for either acceptance and adoption of these goals and objectives, or we're looking for direction on changes that you, like, brought back for the next meeting.
Questions to Mr. Crzan? Commissioner Dubach.
I think this is pretty well reflective of the conversations that we had over three or four lengthy sessions, and we got some public feedback. I would speak to the senior issue a little bit, and on the last two strategic sessions, we had a really hefty, you know, senior objective, and that culminated in the creation of the Senior Task Force, which is currently working to address the questions of housing, transportation, recreation, community involvement. And so those things, I mean, that action has been directed by this body, and I think when they bring back their strategic plan, that's going to what's, that's going to inform our senior initiatives. And so I think that's kind of where we have landed throughout this conversation. Not that it's not a priority, but it's a priority that we have activated on, and we have people actively working on right now. What I'm seeing here, I think, is a comprehensive list that recognizes things we know are going to be taking up a lot of bandwidth in the coming year, like completion of the Civic Center project, and also has, you know, aspirational must-dos, like, I would argue, environmental sustainability plan is something that has to be a part of everything we're doing as a city. We have to be planning for the future, and that starts immediately in all infrastructure and public works projects and development and everything that we do. So I'm really pleased to see that incorporated here. So is there, do we need a motion to approve this? I will move to approve the strategic plan.
Motion by Commissioner Dubach. We have support by Commissioner Purush. Discussion, Commissioner.
Yeah, I will not be supporting that motion. When we sent this back to staff for wordsmithing, I expected more wordsmithing than I see in the document. There are sort of, I'll say my objections are in two broad areas, but if you'd like me to go through my two pages of notes point by point, I'd be happy to do so. My first objection is that there are a number of places here where we have something that's supposed to be an objective that is not an objective. Objectives are, in a perfect world, some, help me out here, are smart. They are specific, measurable, attainable, are, are
Realistic.
Realistic and time-bound. And we have a lot of objectives here that are not. And in fact, often, what we've got described here as an objective is really just an action step. Secondly, I think it is time for us to start putting quantifiable standards into our strategic plan. There are a number of objectives here where, and I'll pull one out just as an example. Our goal to attract, retain, and grow our employees, I think we need to put numbers to that. How many people, you know, what, how did we do with our attraction, with the number of applications we got? What has been our retention rate? What has been our return over rate? And that's just one area where I believe that we, over the next few months, need to do some benchmark studies to look at the past and what our stats have been, so that we, as a commission, and so that the public can actually look at hard numbers and say, yes, we accomplished what we said we were going to accomplish. So as I say, I'm willing to go over my notes point by point, but I will be voting against the motion and would like to see us consider putting together perhaps a committee of three commissioners to work with staff to better refine and make this document something that we can actually measure our success by.
Commissioner Dubach.
Hey, Mayor. I appreciate Commissioner Douglas's sentiment. And this is my eight strategic plan, the eight years that we've done these, they have been the marching orders for staff. And I think the level of detail that you're talking about, you're talking about doing the job of the city manager and staff. We set the objectives. We tell them what we want to accomplish. It's staff's job to get their heads together, determine the metrics, tell us what they're proposing. We approve those proposals, and then they activate. I don't know that we want to micromanage these goals to that level. We never have before.
Micromanagement, and I will say that there is micromanagement in the action plans that we have here, but appropriate supervision, I mean, setting an objective and quantifying the outcomes that we seek, I mean, knowing what we want the staff to accomplish is absolutely our role. And finding ways wherever possible to actually measure that success is absolutely a policy governance role, and is absolutely appropriate for us.
Commissioner Dubach.
I would just say, if you look back at the last seven strategic plans, big goals have been accomplished with this kind of broad objective and then action steps. So we've had goals, objectives, and action steps without us getting into it, unless it's a situation that calls for a worker, for us to actually action-plan it with staff because they need more direction. And so, Mr. Johnson, I wanted to weigh in, but I'm happy to hear what you have to say, but I feel like this is on the level with everything we've done in previous strategic plans, which I think have served us well, given the number of major goals that we've accomplished over the last six, seven years.
Well, I think what's here is consistent with what we've done in the last several plans. I do have to come to the defense of Commissioner Douglas in that she, more than anyone else here, has been always wanting to be careful to make sure that the commission wasn't moving into administration's territory. And I definitely don't think that's what she's trying to do right now.
Right. Commissioner Macy.
I agree with Commissioner Douglas, who stated this better than I could and probably would not have today. But I found the strategic plan process to be a little bit frustrating for the reason you mentioned. These aren't smart goals, and it seems like we should be setting them. And I appreciate what Commissioner Dubach is saying, and I think what I would have hoped for is that we would have done what we'd done at the strategic planning sessions, and then that would have gone to staff, and then they would have put the numbers in. And I think not having those numbers, maybe they need further direction from us, or maybe they need more time, but either way, it does seem like something we should try to have in the plan going forward, and it makes, it makes the strategic plan a more sensical object than it is now, something you can refer to and say, we did this, or we didn't do this, and rather than broad strokes. And I do agree that we've accomplished a lot of things with a more broad strokes plan, and that's credit to our city staff and to our city manager. But given the opportunity to make this great, I would love to do that, and I would love to be on a committee if it were formed.
The other thing I'll add is sometimes, you know, this is just my personal experience, and I'll use a football analogy to kind of articulate it. It's good to have measured goals where you can say, yep, we went from this number to this number. The hazard you sometimes have is twofold. One, people can manage to a number and not to the real objective or ideology or mission or vision that, you know, the board or this commission has. I think the second thing is, is if you start getting too specific in those numbers, I mean, we have a coach, and we have a team, and, you know, the objective is to win the Super Bowl, right? We don't say, oh, you have to go, you know, 10 and 6 and rush for 100 yards every game and pass for 400. What we're saying is, take us to a Super Bowl, we'd like you to do it, you know, in this style, maybe. So it's always a little difficult, because some of the things we deal with aren't at a 10,000-foot level. Some of the decisions we have to make at this body are somewhat, you know, at a 1,000-foot level. But I think for me, if there's a consideration for, you know, adding measurements, I think we have to be also aware of the hazards that come with that as well. So Commissioner Purush.
It goes without saying that I'm not a big fan of the planning process, just because it's very difficult for me to do. In my brain, it just doesn't work really well to do this process. And so I tend to back away from it, not take a real strong look at it, and try to not be involved with it as much as I possibly can. That's just me. But I think what we've got here is an excellent work product in its current form. That doesn't mean, though, that it couldn't be a whole lot better. So I guess, I guess what my question is, is are we throwing this completely out? Is that your suggestion, Commissioner Douglas, in starting over with a different procedure? Or are we going to, in your mind, take this as like a, as a starting point, or maybe even a middle point, and refining it even further in terms of some of these specific objectives that are in here?
No, I mean, there's, I mean, there's much that I wouldn't touch in the plan, but there are several elements where I believe we need to refine an objective. I mean, for example, when we talk about, oh, where was it? I mean, we're not asking, we should be evaluating customer satisfaction beyond just the broad standard of using the Cobalt Study as a benchmark, because those are like sort of big customer satisfaction answers. But we have customer-facing departments, and we should be measuring customer satisfaction. And I haven't identified or settled on all of those departments, but certainly any place where there's a counter, the building department, the planning department, the clerk's office, the treasurer's office. How do we know our Disney Way training is working? I mean, we're talking about doing more Disney Way training, and yet, how do we know that we've moved the needle on that if we haven't found some way to benchmark current conditions and then measure improvements in how our customers perceive the services that they receive?
So a condemnance, or is you would take this as a starting point and then refine it going forward, using your, the three-person committee?
Right. So, I mean, if we need an objective that says, we don't have this. We don't have an objective that says, improve customer satisfaction. And yet, we must. I mean, that's essential to our success as a city and to showing improvement in the planning that we do. I mean, we have a section about customer satisfaction, but the objective isn't written so that the staff can look at it and say, oh, that's what, that's what they want us to accomplish, we will find a way to do it. Our job is to say what we want to happen. Staff's job is to determine how they will do it.
So I'm assuming that if this motion goes down, you would have motions and suggestions to move this forward in another way?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right.
I also think, too, when, you know, we get the measurement from staff, when they give the red, yellow, green analysis, they are putting a measurement in there that reflects the spirit of what this body is looking for in that objective as well. So, Commissioner--
Last thing I'd say is, the level of detail I feel like we're digging for here is what happens when staff brings the item forward as an agenda item. They present a letter with some background, and then we deliberate and give them more direction, and they develop that objective going forward. I don't understand, like, the putting the cart before the horse strategy here, when this is an outline of a collective, you know, conscience of seven elected individuals, giving staff a general direction on the things that are important to all of us, and they, as they always have, will bring them back as agenda items, and that's when we'll get the detail, the backgrounds. Like, yeah, we want to improve service to our residents. I really dislike the corporate customer service speak in government. Our residents should feel seen and well-served, and that they're getting the bang for their buck when they show up at City Hall. And I think Mayor Fornian made that clear, that we don't even know where that level is, there needs to be some benchmarking. And there's probably a number of different pathways to get there. I don't think we need to work group what those options are. I think staff can determine what's the best service to use that, to get that benchmarking, and then build a strategy to move those benchmarks. I don't, I just feel like this is getting into the weeds where our job is to give the direction, and staff executes. Like you said, I feel like we're getting much more into the nuts and bolts of what usually would come to us as a staff letter.
And I said, I mean, I said that. I said, I'm not saying we need to come up with those standards today, but I would say that by the time we approve a budget, we would want to, I mean, if we have an objective to improve customer service by a measurable quantity, I would look to staff, because they know, to bring us those metrics, to come to us, you know, during the budgeting cycle, or at some point in the next six months, and say, look, our, you know, our, last year we served X customers, and we've had an X amount of satisfaction level. We're going to do a counter survey, and we're going to ask people, you know, scale of 1 to 10, how satisfied were you with the results? I mean, it doesn't have to be huge, but here we have no numbers at all. We have no way to quantify what we're doing, and whether staff is succeeding and doing the things that we want them to do. I mean, I'm not saying do it now, but I'm saying come up with some numbers, and if we don't tell them to do it here, they're not going to do it.
I'm sorry, history disagrees with that. Our experience with staff completely disagrees with that, that when we give them an objective, they come back with a strategy with specific recommended actions, and they let us choose. There's no reason to tie them up in a bunch of other meetings with us, when they probably work far more efficiently without us present.
Mr. Johnson?
No comment.
But the counter to that is that they have to spend a lot of time guessing exactly what it was that we want, and coming, and they're having these meetings, and they come back with several solutions, but we could now just tell them, like, this is what we're trying to get you to achieve, we don't care how you achieve it. I mean, I continue to agree with Commissioner Douglas that these are not, these are not good objectives by, by any standard of measuring--
But I think what we're doing is, we're saying, okay, we want to improve service for our residents and for those who, you know, use the services of the city. I think we all agree on that. My understanding is that staff will come back and say, okay, well, you know, we don't have a measure right now, but if we were to use a measure, we'd have to use some external measure, and here's what we're going to do to improve service levels, and here's how we're going to measure it and show you that we moved the ball. But the challenge is, is we have no basis to, we have no data that we've probably collected on some of these things. We have no basis to go from, and I would expect when they bring up any element for us to approve, like, hey, we're doing a customer service, you know, email service, or phone call. I'm just, I'm not trying to put the cart before the horse here, but whatever idea they have, you know, they're going to make sure that accompanying that, they're going to have some sort of measurement to make sure that that idea can be gauged, whether or not it was successful or not, and that that idea aligns with the goals that we have out here for them to achieve. Mr. Johnson, you have something to add?
Yes. The process we have now is far from perfect, and the document is the same, but it's a document and a process that actually works for us. We didn't have any kind of strategic planning when I started here in 2005, none at all. And that resulted in there being arguments about everything, because the commission hadn't come to terms and actually decided what it was it really wanted upfront. So, when we'd present something in the budget, it'd be debated. When we wanted to actually do it, it would be debated. The big advantage that the strategic planning process has been for me is to have that discussion and that argument upfront. The commissioners come to terms with what they really want to accomplish, and generally they have supported it down the line, when we actually had a budget item that relates to a goal, and when we actually had the program that follows through on the budget item. So, it hasn't been a major project at every step of the way, like it used to be.
Commissioner Douglas?
I agree. I think that's awesome. But, you know, but you can always improve, you can always do better, you can always be more specific and more successful. I mean, I think quantifiable standards make life easy for the staff. You know, they've got numbers they know they have to hit, they make it easier for the public to evaluate what we're doing. I'm a fan of strategic planning. I've done a lot of it. That's why I'm passionate about this, and that's why I want to make it better.
Commissioner Macy?
I just feel like there are two contrary points. One is that staff's always done exactly what we want, and the other is, but we don't actually have any current customer satisfaction metrics, but haven't we wanted that for years, customer satisfaction metrics? So, maybe if we had said, hey, we need to have a customer satisfaction metric that will show that we've gotten 60% better, that would have forced staff to say, okay, they want us to actually make the metrics this year, and we better do it and start having a baseline. And that's the kind of thing that would be in an improved revised document.
Commissioner Dubbuck?
That's not entirely accurate. When we first started talking about it and getting a better idea of where we stand as a community and how people feel about the services, that's when we started doing the Cobalt Study. So, that was staff's first attempt at bringing us some real hard data to see how we stack up against other communities. And what we've just been talking about really for the last two years is really identifying how do we get real-time data on people that are having direct experiences, interactions with our staff at City Hall. So, that's, that's a more relevant question that we've been asking, and I think it was brought up very clearly at the strategic planning session--
And budget.
And in budget. And I don't, there's no doubt to me that this will come forward as an agenda item, you know, in the first six months of this, of the fiscal year that we're planning for here, with some real concrete options. I guess what I'm thinking, I'm looking at this list and thinking that every single item on this list is going to be a three-hour meeting before staff even brings us a letter. I don't know how that's helpful to anybody, and I don't know how that's going to be accomplishing more.
I don't, I, if we tell staff to increase customer satisfaction by X percent, there's no meeting. They come back to us with a plan that says this is how they're going to do it, as they do now. But we will know that there's a bogey out there, that there's a, that there's a number that they're supposed to meet. And a year later, we run the numbers to see if what they did worked. So, no, there's no, it's easy. There's no meeting. You set a number, and you say, go forth and accomplish it.
Commissioner Prush has something to add?
I'm working at a little bit of a disadvantage here, because I missed some parts of some of the strategic planning meetings. What I'm wondering is, were any of the points that you brought up this evening, Commissioner Douglas, were those points that were raised in any of the strategic planning meetings themselves? In other words, I don't, when I was there, I don't recall hearing these types of objections to the specific objectives and the way that they were worded in any of those meetings. And I guess I'm wondering if, number one, was it, and I missed it, or number two, if it wasn't brought up, why?
Most of, what I'm saying is, I agree with the substance of what we have in there, but in a number of cases, we've got, we've got an objective that isn't an objective. You know, we've got an objective-- I mean, it will have an objective, okay, in fact, we have one that says, use, in the Community Engagement Plan, it says, use multiple methods to communicate. That's not an objective. That's, that's a task. That's an action. I mean, an objective says, touch people 500,000 times in a year, and then the action step is use multiple media to achieve that objective. Because what we want to accomplish is touching people, reaching people, making people aware. And then, and I'm happy with that as a goal, and to send the Community Engagement Department off and say, and do it. I don't care what multiple methods they use at all. They could use a single method, if it was, if it achieved that quantifiable objective.
See, here, I look at this one, and I say, we debated during the strategy session the merits and benefits and reasons why we would want to have multiple modes of sharing information with residents. And then what we have here are some of the actionable steps that, in the actions themselves, whether or not they're accomplished, we can determine if our team, you know, you know, got that objective done. And I think within those action items, there are also measurements, like downloads of the Royal Oak app, number of neighborhood associations contacted with city information. So, I feel the objective, you know, the merits and the, you know, the overall vision of why we did this was discussed at the strategy, and we came out of it in this particular example to say, look, well, we think multiple modes is important. Well, how do you measure that? Well, we have some actions. Did you get them done, yes or no? Well, did you get them done? It's not binary. It's, okay, how many apps are downloaded? How many neighborhood associations were contacted? And then we can judge to say, oh, two were contacted. Well, that doesn't seem like a lot. Or four apps are downloaded. What's going on? We shouldn't be proud of that number. But if we say, hey, look, we have 60,000 residents in the city, and we downloaded 25,000 apps, I mean, I don't really have any basis to measure that, and I don't know that our staff does, but we will know whatever ideas and whatever strategies they're employing at these action steps, you know, will result in some data, and that data will have to interpret whether or not it's a success or not. Maybe we have some benchmarks. Maybe we say, for other cities that have done this, it's this; for companies, it's that. But what we're telling them is, we're going to measure you on the downloads of Royal Oak, so I'm sure they're going to take the app now, and we're going to, and, you know, there's so many nuances that go in it, but ultimately, we'll be able to determine, one, were these actions technically achieved, and how well were they achieved to support the thing that we told them to do, which is employ multiple media, sharing information with residents? But I don't, I mean, getting down to a specific number, I think, is a little bit hazardly, because we've never done a tracking of Royal Oak apps. I don't know until they bring a proposal to us and say, hey, I need $5,000 to promote our app, we think we can go from 1,000 to 5,000 downloads, and then we vote out it on this table. Right now, we're giving them instruction to say, go ahead, in this example, and pursue apps and bring it to us, and we're going to vote on some sort of action that you may have down the road. And at that time, they may have a strategy that says, we think we can go from this to this, and it's the best use of money. But at this point, I'm not sure that we would know what that would mean. Because if we just gave them a number, they may say, oh, well, I need a budget of $6.8 million to go door-to-door and make sure everyone puts the app on, so they can get, you know, free taxes for two years. You know, I don't, you know what I mean?
Commissioner Macy?
So, I think the thing is that we, everyone seems to agree, broad strokes, everyone seems to agree, broad strokes, that this strategic plan is what we want. So, I'm thinking about the timing. Is there a reason not to let me and Commissioner Douglas go monkey around with it and come, see if we can come back with something better before we approve it as a, as a body here, if that's something we want to do? If we are already saying, this is, this is what it's going to look like, I mean, staff can move forward as they're doing their budgeting plan. And then if you don't like what we come up with, then you can tell us then.
I would argue that it's better to give direction earlier than later. And so, at a high level, I don't know if you put a number on any of these. It's my opinion, I'll let Don, maybe he's better at answering it, but I don't know, putting a number on any of these is going to be preventing them from getting the initial work done. But I think doing nothing right now and not giving them any direction at all would delay, because how do we know next time somebody doesn't pipe up and say, well, I'm not good with the strategy, I want to do something different? So, I think approving the strategy as it is is important, to start giving them direction to work on things. I think if there's ideas about, you know, how we measure them a little bit differently, I'm open to that, but I think giving them direction right now is important. Commissioner Prush?
I think maybe the only time limitation that the staff mentioned to us early on was the reason that they scheduled this earlier, rather than into the January, February, March period that we had last year, was because it's easier in terms of developing a budget. But on the other hand, I don't see why we couldn't approve this tonight as a baseline, and also, then subsequently, within the next, in the next, you know, five minutes, approve the creation of a committee that would, on a going-forward basis, fine-tune this and bring back their fine-tuning to the commission, so that this could be amended and fine-tuned. It would give the staff at least a baseline, so that they could start the budget process. But then, it would also give us an opportunity as a group to just tweak it a little bit. It's not as if once we adopt this, we can't touch it, you know, for the next, until next year. If there's a group of people that would like to fine-tune some specifics in here, as Commissioner Douglas has suggested, I don't see why that couldn't be done on a going-forward basis, starting tonight.
Commissioner Macy?
Having been burned somewhat before in doing things out of order like this, I think I would want to know first that there could be, that there was a sunset on this, or that it was going to be taken up again at a future meeting after a discussion. I think I would like that to be part of the initial motion, because otherwise, the motion could pass, and then that could just be the end of it. So--
I'd like to make a motion to amend the motion on the table, that if the motion on the table passes, that a committee consisting of Commissioner Macy and myself be tasked with refining the document and bringing it back to the table at the first meeting in February.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion? Commissioner Prush?
That's an ambitious schedule. I mean, I'd be willing to give you a little bit more time, but, I mean, if you all think you can do it in two weeks, you already have it all. Commissioner Douglas has a list already. That's fine with me.
Commissioner Dubbuck?
I think the plan is fine how it is. I think the kind of numbers you're trying to get through are going to take more time, more study, and more money to get to those numbers. If you want to know, if you want to give direction to improve customer service 15%, then you first need a baseline, which means we need a process to establish customer satisfaction, which means we need to buy a product, which means we have to go research products. And I don't know how you're going to do all that and get a baseline to give them a direct percent to improve in the next three weeks. So, I oppose the motion, because I think that the things you're trying to get to, we generally get to through the normal process, once we've given staff the broad direction.
Commissioner LaVassor?
I just want clarification. I suspect that the meetings between Commissioners Douglas and Macy would be subject to the Open Meetings Act, and I just wanted to make sure that there was no confusion on that issue.
That's correct.
I think my opinion on it is, while I agree with Commissioner Dubbuck, I don't have any problem. If you can prove to at least me otherwise that there are a better way to measure, then I will certainly give you that opportunity. I'm comforted by the fact that we've done this for a number of years, and that we've had a long history of staff bringing ideas to us with measurements and things like that, but if there's something better out there, and you guys have it, you know, certainly, as long as it's a public meeting and people have participation and input, you know, I'll take a listen to it and see if we make amendments to this plan, you know, to incorporate those new measurements. That's not an issue for me. Although, if they're bad measurements, I'll go toe-to-toe with you, and we'll have the debate. All right. I'll call for the vote on the amendment. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay. The amendment passes. We're back to the original motion. Any further discussion on the original motion?
Could you clarify the original motion for us? It's been a while.
No, Randy, I can't. It's been a while, no. I would, the original motion was from Commissioner Dubbuck that approved the strategy document as it is. The amendment that we just passed says, okay, we can update some of those measurements, and maybe some of the wording to make things really, you know, sound like objectives, so that we're opening it up in February to have some amendments that reflect the committee results, consisting of Commissioner Macy and Commissioner Douglas. Good?
Sounds good.
No, I'm confused. No, I'm kidding. This is the worst amended, of the amended motion that we've ever had, so. All right. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. This brings us to the last item on our agenda, which is the possible tentative agreements and related matters. Mr. Gillum?
Mayor Fornian City Commissioners, back in 2011, the Michigan Legislature passed Public Act 152, which set limits on the amount that a community like the city of Royal Oak could pay towards its employees' health care costs. Excuse me. Under the act, the city was actually given three options or three different funding models to choose from. One was a hard cap, which was a hard dollar figure, a maximum amount that the city could contribute to an individual's health care costs. The second was to adopt an 80%, 20% model, whereby the-- The second was to adopt an 80%, 20% model, whereby the city would contribute 80% of the cost of the employee's health care, the employee would be responsible for 20% of the health care costs. The third option would be to opt out of the funding models set in the act, and then have the community adopt its own method of funding, of course, subject to the ceilings that were established by the funding mechanisms contained in the act. Historically, we have relied upon the 80%, 20% model here at the city. We've had discussions in closed session with Labor Council, Howard Schiffman, for a variety of reasons, including the city's favorable claims history, the benefits that the city has recognized as a result of self-funding our health care, and also in, in recognition of the fact that, for our lower-paid employees, even 20% of health care costs is a significant cost for the employees. Mr. Schiffman's recommendation, and I would agree, is that the city opt out for the upcoming benefits year, that is, the year starting April of 2019, and instead of the 80%, 20% model that we've relied upon historically, that the city adopt a 90%, 10% model. So specifically, there's a resolution that we would need to have you approve to opt out of the models contained in Public Act 152. I'm going to circulate that resolution for you to take a look at right now. Again, this would specifically be to opt out of the funding models under PA 152, for purposes of revisiting, for purposes of the 2019, 2020 benefit year. We would recommend approval of this resolution. And the language of the resolution was prepared by Mr. Schiffman's office, but it really comes primarily from the State Department of Treasury, recognizing this one, this is one of the options that we have under Public Act 152.
Questions? Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, not, not a question, really, but a comment. We have said at this table and elsewhere that we have recruiting challenges with, as a government entity, we are in a full economy position, we're competing against the private sector for employees, and if there are areas where we can make it more attractive for people to work here, we should do it. This is a way to accomplish that, and as Mr. Gillum pointed out, it's especially beneficial to lower-paid employees, because that percentage took a higher chunk out of their pay. We have, we have to be good stewards of the city's money, but we have to provide people who provide the services that are our bread and butter, and I think this is an effective step.
I'll just add to that, we just had a conversation that, by way of example, discussed customer service, talked about how our residents deserve the very best service in this community, and I truly believe that the people that work in the city of Royal Oak, from uniform to non-uniform, are our strongest and best asset. And we're very fortunate to have a strong team serving us as residents and serving this community, both in terms of management, all the way down to the entry-level position. And this here will help us achieve not only benefits to retain and attract talent, but also help with some of our lower-paid entry-level employees that, at times, struggle, just like a number of people do, and really keep them focused on the fine work that they do for this community as well. So when I look at it, it is a win for everyone involved, from certainly our employees, but also for the residents who rely on their service to keep this community strong and keep it moving in the right direction. I will fully be supporting a motion that moves this forward. Commissioner Prush?
I'll move approval of the motion approving this resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Prush, seconded by Commissioner Douglas, Commissioner Prush? Commissioner Doug, Commissioner Dubak, sorry.
Go ahead.
No, Commissioner, no, I called him Commissioner Douglas.
He called me Commissioner Douglas.
Commissioner Prush?
Labor Council explained to us very clearly that, number one, because we're a public entity, we're dealing in a different milieu than people who are dealing with the same issue in the private sector. There's different laws, there's different types of things that we're dealing with that are, that are unique to a municipality that is not the same situation as with the General Motors, or with the Lear, or somebody else out there. Secondly, we're also dealing with changes in state law and the impact on us, and we don't have a whole lot of control over that. And the third thing, to, to also reiterate what Commissioner Douglas said, is that we are, even though our health care system and our system of managing this whole issue is different than the, than the private sector, we are in direct competition with the private sector for employees. And with a tight labor market, the way it is these days, being able to adjust and to be flexible in terms of benefits, like health care benefits, is really to our benefit. We know that we've had trouble recruiting police officers, we know we've had trouble recruiting people in the building inspection area, significant difficulties in those areas. And granted, with the type of labor market, that means that they have choices out there, but it also means that they're going to be looking really carefully at the benefits that can accrue from coming to Royal Oak as an employee. So I think in order to be competitive with not only the private sector, but also with other municipalities out there, we have to take a hard look at these benefit issues. So I think this move is just in the right direction. It's certainly not a permanent fix, as labor negotiations proceed in the next couple of years, there may be even further tweaks to this, and we will have another opportunity to take a look at these issues again. But I think as of today, right now, this will put us in a much better position to be, be able to attract the kind of employees that we want in the community, because we need them, the community needs them, and I think this is the right way to go right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Prush. Commissioner Lavassar?
I, I have some concerns over this proposal. State law seems to set a standard of, of a city paying no more than 80% of the cost of health care, and, and the world seems to be moving more toward the employee having to pay a significant share. I suspect most of the residents of our city have to pay more than 20%. I consider 20% to be a fairly reasonable amount to expect of our, our employees, and, and, you know, by moving to 10%, I think we're moving it pretty significantly out of line with what most people in our community are paying. That said, I could have supported this if, if I saw a real tangible benefit for the taxpayers in our town. We know it's, this is going to increase costs for our health care, so there has to be some benefit elsewhere. We had some discussions in closed session about some ways, in theory, that the, the taxpayers could benefit, the city could benefit. It simply wasn't tangible enough for me to, to say that I, I would deviate from the norm, which is for the city to not pay more than 80%. So for that reason, I won't support, I won't support this today.
Any other discussion? All right, is this a roll call vote? Oh, Commissioner Dubak?
I, I think Commissioner Prush made a pretty clear case, that, you know, with the talent retention problems, and, you know, needing to compensate staff across the board in a way that makes them want to work here, and invest their skills and talents here, you know, including police and fire, you know, we don't necessarily have money to give substantial raises year on year, but this is something we can afford, it's a reasonable benefit that comes with tangible benefit to us as residents, in that we're keeping a competent, qualified, well-compensated staff here, dedicating their talents here, instead of having constant turnover, which means inexperienced people in very important positions. So I, I think, I understand the debate, but I think the, the case was made very well for, for the value to our residents.
And I'll just add, too, when we talk about comparing this group, I think Commissioner Prush did a good job, although we're not competing directly with the public sector on the types of jobs, and, yeah, most of us may be paying any different amount for benefits, but, you know, the people that work for this city are charged with delivering public safety, safe roads, navigable sidewalks, clean water, things that are extremely important to the health and well-being of all of us. And I think making sure as a community that we have our eyes wide open and make sure that we are doing things that we can manage to do, that we can afford to do, that we have the right people and the right roles to deliver these critical services, that literally our lives and health depend on, to me, is essential. And so, I think that, you know, our employees over the Great Recession have worked with us a lot, and I think, you know, the market is changing, and I think certainly we have to, as a, as an objective, one of our objectives, as this, as a, a strategy objective, one that we just passed, motion to go, was to make sure that we recruit and retain the very best people, and this is one of the first action items that we are taking and that we can measure, you know, moving forward. So just like to make sure that we can do a lot of comparisons, but we can't always compare, it's not always fair to compare the work that our folks do in this city and the importance of that work to the quality of our life and to life itself, so. Is this a roll call vote?
I would ask that it be a roll call vote, because PA 152 requires a two-thirds majority vote by the city commission, so we do need five votes.
Okay, we'll begin with Commissioner Prush.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbs?
You're going this way?
Yeah, decided to spice it up a little bit.
I was going to abstain, so I'm going to abstain.
Do you have a conflict?
I, I just, I, I, I don't see either one as good for the city or good for the workers, and I just...
Don't...
And I, I've got a personal conflict with it as well, so I, which I'm not going to disclose.
Actually, one needs to.
Yeah.
A personal opinion that I don't care to disclose, that, that, not a conflict, just a, an opinion, so.
Can, abstentions out of order, is... Is it, if you don't vote no, just sorry, I'm trying to get the, for the record, how does that go?
Unless there's a conflict of interest, a member should be voting on, on an issue that's brought in front of the body.
Okay.
I'll vote no.
No, by Commissioner Gibbs, Commissioner Lavassar?
No.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Dubak?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes five to two, in favor. Okay. So, that brings us to topic one, says related matters, now.
I guess that was technically the related matters, but I guess, as the agenda also indicates, possible tentative agreements. In anticipation that the commission might be willing to opt out under Public Act 152, we have had discussions with some of the city's bargaining units about an extension to their current contract that would include modification of their health care contribution, again, based upon an opt-out, if that's what the commission wanted to do. Specifically, we've had discussions with the Police Command Officers Association and the Detectives Association. Both groups have contracts that are scheduled to expire as of June 30th of this year, 2019. What we've had discussions with them about are one-year extensions on their contract, that is, through June 30th of 2020, with a 2.5% across-the-board wage increase. In addition, based upon the opt-out under Act 152, we would be moving to a 90%, 10% employee health care contribution model, that is, the employee would now be contributing, in these groups, would be contributing 10% of the cost of their health care, effective as of April 1, when the new benefits plan year goes into place. In addition, pursuant to the agreement for purposes of stability, there would be an additional two-year moratorium on any other discussions relative to changing the 90-10. So the 90-10 would stay in, in place for a period of three years, that is, through 2022.
Contractually?
Contractually, that's correct. So, two separate actions, first, we would recommend approval of the proposed tentative agreement with the Police Command Officers Association.
Commissioner Douglas?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubak. Discussion. Commissioner Prush?
And just to reiterate again, how many people are in that bargaining unit, in the command officers?
In the Commander Officers Association, I believe it's 17.
17 people? Okay, thank you.
I would add that this has already been approved by the bargaining unit, in fact, both of these have. We do not, we never asked the commission to approve a labor agreement that hasn't already been approved by the bargaining unit.
That's absolutely correct.
And this is just a, a simple vote or a roll call vote?
This is a majority vote, so a roll, typical vote would be fine.
All right, any other discussion? Commissioner Lavassar?
For, for the same reasons as the previous, my, my concerns on the previous motion, I'll have a hard time supporting this one, because my concerns with moving to a 90%, 10% health care share with, with the employees, and I, I simply have concerns about doing that. I, I also have some concerns, I, I believe this may be historically how it's been done, but the fact that, that these matters are not posted for the public to see in advance of the meetings and the vote, I, I find problematic, and so, I'm going to be voting no on this.
Any other discussion?
I'll just add, for all the reasons before, but underscored by the fact that, you know, when it comes to public safety, I think we've done a great job under the leadership of our command officers, and I think that making sure that we retain them and having the ability to recruit them when they so decide to retire is, is ultra-important in this circumstance, so I'll be supporting the motion.
All right, with that, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the motion passes five to. Okay, um...
And then finally, along the same lines, we've also had discussions with the Detectives Association, which, in anticipation of a question from Commissioner Prush, I believe, contains seven members. Again, the same kind of an extension to their existing labor agreement, a one-year extension, providing for a 2.5% across-the-board wage increase, a shift to the 90%, 10% cost-sharing model for employee health care, with the, again, the same two-year moratorium under contract for an additional two years past the extension. So again, we would recommend approval of the tentative agreement with the Detectives Association as well.
Commissioner Douglas?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion. I suppose all the same arguments as before, just want to commend the Detectives Bargaining Unit as well. I think they're upstanding individuals, and they do an amazing job, just like our command officers, so. With that, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes five to. All right, that brings us to the end of our meeting, right, Mr. Gillum? If my memory serves me correct, the previous discussions.
I have nothing else tonight, thank you.
All right, notwithstanding anything for the betterment of our community, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Whoa, geez. Jumping on that one, I'll give it to Commissioner Prush, seconded by Commissioner Dubak. Discussion on this motion. All right, with that, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, we're adjourned.